Broadcast exclusively on your Lorain County Community College Education Station. The Lorain County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorain County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Alari. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
I'll catch up with you. Go ahead. Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've increased our board members to four. It's a silent voting partner. Was a gift of a constituent and I thought it was pretty neat. David brought a replica of a famous First Lady, so I thought if he could do that, I could bring Aunt Sam. Good morning and welcome to the December 13th meeting of the Lorain County Board of Commissioners. Benjamin Franklin has said diligence is the mother of good luck. We have a guest in the audience this morning. I'd like to welcome John Hauser, who is the Executive Director of Main Street Lorain. John, would you like to come to the microphone and say something to us, especially about your red tie?
(laughing).
Behind you.
Microphone's here?
Yes, please.
Actually, I don't need a microphone because I'm a Phesian by nature, so I like to speak without a microphone, so my parents, I didn't leave, so I always have a microphone. College. Thank you for recognizing me this morning. My name is John Hauser. I'm the new Executive Director of Main Street Lorain, which is a nonprofit corporation dedicated to the revitalization and redevelopment of downtown Lorain. I've been there three weeks, so I can tell you everything there is to know about downtown Lorain. I'm very excited about the opportunity and I think Lorain is a diamond in the rough. I'm an Ohioan, I've lived in Ohio most of my life, and to tell you the truth, I had never been to Lorain. And coming here for the first time with all the projects that are going on with the Gold Point Project and Smithville Development and the potential of the port, I think that some really dynamic things can happen downtown and I'm excited to be part of that. I errandly wore a red tie this morning in recognition of Betty, but we learned at a workshop that red creates anxiety.[159.12][159.12](laughing) So, I'll keep my jacket buttoned so that we don't get anxious. But I just wanted to introduce myself to everyone this morning. Thank you for your support of the Main Street programs and I hope that we can live up to your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. We look forward to working with you. Welcome. Okay. Madam Clerk?
At 10:30, there will be a public hearing on the proposed annexation of approximately 3.7 acres from Alari Township to the city of Alari, Ohio. Attorney Murray acting on behalf of Agent Christina Torres. Under Resolutions 1, Human Services Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
I do not believe there was transfers. Requisitions?
You mean advances.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we're with you.
Requisitions?
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I make an exception to 2443, 2447. I think we need some kind of strategy with the computers. I'm really concerned about it. There's one on there for $38,000, software for server email program. I went downstairs yesterday in our computer room and there's, seems to me like there's a computer down there, a server, that has enough room on it to take care of what we need, and I don't understand why we're paying 38,000.
Well, maybe we need to talk about that.
I tried to get ahold of you, Ernie, last night. Couldn't get you. Was about a quarter after four. So I talked with Karen and I thought they were both working on the same page and one should know what the other one knows, but apparently it's not working and I find this with some of the other computer people, too. So I think what we need is to call someone in here, a consulting firm or someone. We need an overview and a strategy for these computers. When we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars for computers and I don't know that much about computers, I need to have someone that we can depend on and that could consolidate the computers. We've got departments that are, everybody's doing their own thing and it's getting pretty expensive.
Let's identify the topic first, okay? The 2443 is a purchase order for software, for a server for email program from ASAP Software, $38,118.29. And the other purchase order is 2447. It says CPUs training and monitors for MicroAdvantage for $5,320. Commissioner Moore?
No, I'm aware of that.
Well, no, but you wanted to speak and I...
No, but there was other things being said in there and it's more, it sounds like to me there's, when you made the statement that there's, people are not on the same page, I think there's a disciplinary issue and I don't think this public forum is the place to discuss a disciplinary issue. And I think we should probably have an executive session today to discuss possible disciplinary issues. I think that would be appropriate so that we can all get on the same page. Do you think that's appropriate or not? Commissioners?
I agree.
Okay, then why don't we just hold that discussion because there was more said in that statement than two issues regarding purchases, so we'll have...
Okay, how do you feel about strategic planning?
That's why we hired a director. So, I think we should have that discussion.
But I think what would... Okay, we'll discuss this in executive session.
Certain aspects of your comments, we'll discuss in executive session. Okay, but there is a motion and a second to approve these requisitions. And since the issue has been raised, I think we need a little bit more discussion about what the software for the server and the email program is. Can you...
If you want, why don't we have that, why don't we just put that on hold, those two issues, until we come back and we can vote on that after the...
Okay, if that's what you want.
And we can have the IT Director explain at that time or would you rather...
Well, I think he needs to explain publicly.
No, I know that, I know that, but we can come back after executive. This looks like it's going to be a short meeting today and we have a 10:30 annexation here and so I think with the items that we have, I think we only have about, yeah, 10 items. We could probably be done and...
We also need to deal with the first communications issue, so maybe we can deal with both those issues at the same time after the executive, if that's agreeable to...
Hopefully, we can have an executive session before the annexation. That's what I'm hoping for.
Okay. I just wanted to point out that we also have that issue that's unresolved from last week.
What's the heat set at?
Is it getting hot in here, Commissioner?
Oh, it is.
It's going to get real hot.
I turned it down.
Come on, you have three politicians talking, it should be warm in here.
No, that's not why I'm warm.
Usually gets hot.
Oh, it's really. Thank you, Mary Jo.
You're welcome.
Okay, so then, there is a motion and a second to approve the requisitions. Commissioner Basie has accepted two of the items.
Why don't we, can I amend my, oh, you made the motion.
Moore has suggested that we hold those two.
Yeah, why don't we hold those two?
Oh, that's fine.
Do you want to hold the whole issue or just those two?
Yeah, why don't we just hold the whole requisition, sounds like.
You want to rescind the motion and then do a whole new motion? This way it'd be cleaner for us.
I will withdraw my motion to approve the requisition.
Thank you.
And I withdraw my second. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, so what are we doing? Just holding it?
Yeah.
Holding all the computers.
Until, holding everything until after the executive session.
That's easy for the typing, right?
The entire requisition?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll just hold it.
Okay, all right, we're on the same page. Good. Madam Clerk?
Travel expenses.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within the jurisdiction, Lorain County Commissioners.
Well, since we're going to have an executive session anyway, shall we hold number nine as well?
Hold. Yes, please, Commissioner.
I'll hold. Thank you.
Instruct clerk to advertise for bids for the supplying of copy paper and toilet tissue in the Office Services Department, Maintenance Department, Lorain County Administration Building, and Lorain County Department of Job and Family Services. Said notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on December 14th and 22nd, 2001, and bids will be open on Friday, December 28, 2001, at 2:00 p.m. in the public hearing room.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes. Yvonne, is this two separate bids?
Yes.
Okay, because it didn't sound like computer paper until a paper were one bid. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Authorized payments Lorain County Title, amount of $692 for an incorrect conveyance fee. The purchase price was $70,000, not $243,000, and the Auditor's Office has reviewed and recommends approval.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Authorized Lorain County Department of Job and Family Services to enter into a maintenance plan contract for the Windows version of the program expenditures tracking system for the calendar year 2002 at a cost of $1,750 from account 20501-0903-450101 Contract Services.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Authorized transferring the amount of $245 from the supply account 22501-1440-430101 into other expenses account 22501-1440-490101 to allow for the return of unused grant funds and authorized payment the amount of $1,245 to the crimes victims assistance. The return is based upon domestic relations court end of 2001 grant period.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Authorized reappointments of John Keiner, Dominic Miletty, and Robert Demby and Richard Demby as alternate to Lorain County Planning Commission. The effective terms are January 1st, 2002, expiring December 31st, 2004.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Award bid to various vendors for food items to be supplied to Golden Acres Nursing Home and Lorain Medina Community Base Correctional Facility for the period January 1st, 2002 through June 30th, 2002. Due to the validity of the price, food prices, bidders need to inform the Purchasing Department in writing of any anticipated increases in the products.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Authorized salary increase to Stephen Bantic, Clerk Lorain Municipal Court, effective January 1st, 2002. His biweekly rate will increase from $907.48 to $1,304.79, which reflects county's 2-fifth share.
Ms. Rennis, this is a new term of office?
I don't know, Commissioner.
Well, it is, okay. I was just gonna, we had talked about this issue before and, but also moved. This is a new term of office and the salary is 85 percent of whatever the salary is of the judges.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
There is amendment to number 17 and it reads as follows. Amendment Resolution 01445 adopted May 10th, 2001, approving and entering into various agreements to provide services for Lorain County area-wide microenterprise loan program. Said amendment will reflect an increase to the following: $500 to Women's Development Center from $5,000 to $5,500; $500 to Lorain County Joint Vocational School from $5,000 to $550; and $950 to NOAC Consulting, which would be $5,000 to $5,950. And this increase is budgeted in the account 12701-2501-450101 in Consulting Services.
Also moved.
A second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I'd like Ron to expand on this a little bit. And Ron mentioned to me this morning that Brian will be doing the financial reviews next year, so we'll be saving that money.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Ron Twining, TWI-N-G, and I'm the Community Development Director. What we basically did in May when we set up the actual finances for the LAMP program, we frankly took our best guesses on where we would need to spend or likely spend money for training and for financial reviews. We've been very close on the training. Two agencies, Women's Development Center and the Joint Vocational School, may go over by about $500 of the original $5,000 requested. Chamber Commerce is considerably lower than what we had anticipated. The financial reviews, frankly, we didn't anticipate some people being turned down for a loan and needing to resubmit and be reevaluated a second time, and that's why we're off by the $950 on that. So we're asking, since there's signed contract agreements and we're needing to spend the additional money, we're asking that the Commissioners modify the earlier approved resolution that had a not-to-exceed $5,000 amount to these new dollars for three of the four service providers. Just so that you know, in the account that we have in LAMP under Consulting Services, we had appropriated $26,100. We have spent to date, excuse me, $6,737. We have likely before the end of this year another $1,500 in invoices that are coming, so that's what will cause us in part to, the one that we're most concerned about is NOAC finance, and I've tried to explain why we have exceeded the amount. Actually, the activity in the LAMP program greatly exceeded what we had anticipated. I think to date, we are now, before the end of the year, to exceed $240 that will be loaned out through this program, the largest loan being $20,000 apiece.
$220?
$220,000, I'm sorry.
$220,000.
Thank you. Slight different, you know, it's a zero, it doesn't count.
You've got to put your decimal in the right place.
Right.
And you also mentioned that Brian will be doing with this consulting...
Yeah, we've hired a new employee about, I guess it's close 60 days ago now, and he has a financial background and experience and he has actually been working with NOAC to see the procedure that she's following. So that combined with his own experience, we feel that, you know, early next year, he will actually start doing those reviews in-house and we can draw that money as administrative cost and reimburse the general fund through this LAMP fund that's approved. One other point that I need to make is this program grant agreement ends December 31st of this year. We have an application in for next year. Words sometimes come back to haunt us. I would be greatly surprised if the state with our activity did not grant this, but we won't learn whether next year's program has been approved until sometime mid-January, but we're optimistic.
Ron, have you heard how some of these earlier, the businesses that have applied earlier, how they're doing?
They're doing very well. We're current with all payments. Nobody is even delinquent, so everybody's up to date. We're working well with two banks. We are still working with a third bank, trying to bring them online with the program, but you'll get correspondence in regards to that. But the program has been very successful. The banks are very happy with the progress. There was a breakfast, which unfortunately about a week ago, I could not attend, but others did, and I think that it was well received by the companies that participated in that breakfast meeting, just as a, you know, kind of give us some feedback, how are things going? And the companies are prospering very well.
I'm glad to hear that and hopefully these small businesses will be able to hire other people shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
It was a very educational meeting. You missed the part where red was a color that caused anxiety.[1121.08][1121.08](laughing).
Does it answer your questions?
Yes, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Authorized Lorain County Auditor to continue the special fund per ORC Section 31709 and 317321 for increases in fees imposed by Lorain County Recorder for purposes supplementing equipment needs of County Recorder's Office on annual basis effective January 1st, 2002, expiring December 31st, 2002.
Can we hold this? I asked for some information that I just received this morning. Can we hold this until next week?
Mr. Cordez, have you been working on this issue?
Yes, I have, and Ms. Basie did get her information this morning. And I would, we can certainly hold it and we can discuss it next week. There's some information that Ms. Basie received this morning concerning...
Yes.
I have another. Certain funds in the account and the request for funding next year. And we need to discuss what we've done in the past, what we may want to do in the future, and how these funds are affected. So if Commissioner Basie needs some time to look at this data, I think we should wait till next week so we can make a very informed decision on this.
I appreciate it and I would, yeah, prefer that, because you're just receiving this, I think you should look it over, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amendment Resolution 01926 adopted October 4th, 2001, adopting proposal for Medical Mutual of Ohio to provide medical health insurance coverage to Lorain County prisoners and to include the authorization and payment of said claims.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner. You'll see with Resolution Number 19 and 20, and both of them are housekeeping resolutions to amend previous work. And I'd like to point out that there was a new requirement imposed upon us by the Auditor's Office. Previously, we would adopt proposals and if those proposals had funding arrangements in them, the resolution adopting proposals was used to pay fees, bills, et cetera. The ever-shifting sands of requirements down the Auditor's Office now cause us to come back and have to redo resolutions because they've adopted procedures midstream that they've imposed on our departments, and so we'll have to do, we have to redo some of this work. And I want to point out that it has nothing to do with your staff here, it has everything to do with the auditors going in one direction, then going in another direction downstairs. And these are two of those things. So I'd like to point that out very clearly to the board, that this is another requirement that appeared just out of the blue, and we weren't unable to pay our claims with the jail prisoners because we didn't have the word "and pay" said claims after we adopted resolutions authorizing the contracts and engagement or the proposals from these people.
So is this a game that being played because we made them come in public to talk?
You can call it what you like, Commissioner, I'm just pointing out to you that...
The word "and pay", so now we have to like redo all our resolutions and make sure we put "and pay" on these now?
Well, you'll see a lot of resolutions coming in for housekeeping issues because of the changing requirements downstairs. With that, I'll curtail my comments on that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Cordez.
So you're not too upset then, right?
Not too.
Not at all.
I'll move for approval of item number 19.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Amendment.
Are you going to...
I'm looking, I'm thinking.
Oh, you're saying, okay. Well, I was just, I wasn't sure what you were doing. I didn't see smoke come out of your ears.
He's biting his tongue, you see the blood coming out of the side of his mouth.
Yeah, bleeding here. I was wondering if it's not worth the fight. Aye.
Thank you, David.
Amendment Resolution 01927 adopted October 4th, 2001, approving an intern contract with Higgins Pharmacy Incorporated Amherst to continue providing of pharmacy benefits to Lorain County Correctional Facility and Lorain County Detention Home and to include authorization and payment of said claims.
Also moved.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you, David. Mr. Cordez?
Can we do that, can we all get a long speech? Do we have to go down there and do something with the Auditor's Office? Do you recommend that? Do we maybe...
Are you asking me what I recommend?
No, I'm asking you, I think maybe you should maybe offer a hand and say, hey, what seems to be the problem?
I may come back with a stump.
No, I'm just asking you, do you think that would be appropriate?
Have we done that in the past?
Many times.
Can you do it again?
Certainly.
Thank you.
It's the holiday spirit.
It's the season.
I'll wear some mistletoe and I'll dance through the hallways.
Thank you. I don't want to see that.
Don't forget to wear your red tie.[1415.65][1415.65](laughing).
Okay.
Mr. Cordez, can you administer it?
I'm stuck without words.
You mean you're a speechless?
Yes.
Ah, the first time in 10 years.
I have some quick issues here. One of them has to do with some computer purchasing that need to be bought by the Sheriff's Department, uniquely enough to deal with another issue out of the Auditor's Office. Sheriff Stemedy needs to purchase this equipment expeditiously because he doesn't, will no longer have the equipment to deal with his payroll. I don't have exact and specific knowledge of it, but Phil's here if you have any questions. My understanding, Phil, is that you have to have this equipment to be able to process your next payroll, is that correct?
I'd rather have him come up and explain that.
That's fine. Good morning, Sheriff.
What do you have, buddy? Phil Stemedy, Lorain County Sheriff?
Do you have your mistletoe?
We have some back at the department.
I'm betting.
Yeah, County Administrator is correct. The problem we ran into is we sent it over and apparently, I guess, it went to the new computer consultant. He recommended another type of computer, but at our department, we have all Hewlett-Packard right now, our four big servers and every other computer we got. He recommended Compax, but I think this price is a pretty good price for $1,150 for the computers that we need. The problem we run into is we needed to get it in and get it to the board today because on the 20th, they're coming out to put that new payroll system in that ADP from the Auditor's Office. Our computers that my fiscal people are using right now are locking up, and they said if we add this software for this ADP, it probably won't even work. So we'll still be able to use those two computers that we have somewhere else in the department. I'm recommending that we get these two new ones.
Also, we'll point out that the budget, excuse me, the Computer Board has approved those.
Data board.
Yes, the data board did things.
This does seem like a good price for computers.
I think it's an excellent price. My understanding is Hewlett-Packard is buying out Compact anyway, so I don't know much of a difference there.
So you need a motion so you can get this in by this Friday, right?
That's correct.
Other funds?
Okay, I'll move to-
I'll sign it.
Okay, I'll move to approve the requisition.
Do we have to say anything special in this motion?
Just authorize the purchase.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I'll move to approve the requisition number, I guess that's the number up here. Is it S.H.E.? Is that supposed to be in front of it?
Two one five oh one.
Yeah, you can do that.
Okay, S.H.E., two one five dash oh one.
And you might want to throw in "and pay."
Yeah, we have to put "and pay" in there.
Any further discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
I'll have one last issue so we can get into executive session. The City of Lorraine, we provided them with recycling grant money. Because of the reductions in their force up in the city, the regrettable reductions in force, they haven't been able to complete the work under the grant that we provided to them. The resolution that we initially passed didn't have a timeframe in it, but the contract that we subsequently did provided that they should be done by December 31st. I don't believe we need a resolution for this. I'm going to pass this. They're asking for a 45-day extension to complete the work at the park, Lakeview Park. I'm going to, with the agreement of the Board, send them a letter authorizing that 45-days extension. We don't need a resolution for that because the original resolution did not specify a date, but I did want you to be informed of that issue. It's just an FYI.
Are they going to be able to finish it in 45 days?
They believe so, and their letter indicates that they believe they'll have it finished in 45 days. Maybe we should just give them 60 to be on the safe side. The funds are being appropriately spent, and is for the stated project. They just had a bit of a slowdown with the reductions there.
Is he just letting us know, or?
Pretty much. I looked at the resolution before we came in here. If the resolution spoke to a date, then we'd need to do a housekeeping issue on the resolution, but I don't believe in any other actions required by the Board. But I want you to be knowledgeable what's going on.
So this is an informational item?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want this back?
Please.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, Commissioner. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you.
Assistant, can I prosecute Mr. Innes?
There are a couple of issues regarding litigation that I would like to meet with the Commissioners in executive session. Other than that, Commissioner, I have no mistletoe either. I did used to referee basketball games, and I have an old referee shirt.
You've got a whistle?
It might come in handy in the near future.
Oh, dear. Happy New Year. Thank you, Jerry.
Commissioners report.
Can I stop for a minute? I'm sorry, Commissioners, I forgot that Mr. Roca, he had one remaining issue. I apologize to the Board.
Okay.
We need a motion also to modify a resolution. Came to our attention that we, from bond counsel, that we need to put certain wording into a previous resolution. Resolution, I'll underline it here.
Why don't you just read it, please?
Okay. We want to modify Resolution Number 01-1055 of November 15, 2001. I'd like to add, verbiage said resolution moved to ratify, confirm, and approve the certificate of award dated December 4th, 2001 relating to the county's $4,560,000 sewer system improvement bond series 2001, including the dated date of the bonds of December 1st, 2001, the annual principal payments, interest rates, purchase price, and other terms and conditions set forth in the certificate. This is just to clean up for the bonds we issued this week. That just incorporates the schedule for those bonds into the resolution. Counsel felt that it was prudent to do so. Simply a housekeeping resolution doesn't change anything other than the verbiage in the resolution to keep it clean.
Sorry, John.
Is this an addendum, or do you want to just do a new resolution? Is that what you're asking?
This would be a modification to the resolution, the number I read off.
This is from Squire Sanders and Dempsey, and they have suggested the wording.
So what am I, so I'll move to what, add the modification to?
To agree to the requested modification as detailed.
As detailed in, should be a number I don't see it. December 4th, okay, here it is. To the certificate of award dated December 4th. Okay. How's that?
All of this needs to be added, correct?
Okay, so, okay, move to ratify, confirm-
That's correct, the whole heading.
-certificate of award dated December 4th, 2001 relating to the county's $4,560,000 sewer system improvement bond series 2001, including the dated date of bonds of December 1st, 2001, the annual principal payments, interest rates, purchase price, and other terms and conditions set forth in that certificate.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now we're on to Commissioners. Commissioner Vacy, do you have a report this morning?
I don't really have a report, but I would like to commend my colleagues for attending the conference in Columbus for the County Commissioners Association and for allowing some of our staff members that are also on the agenda to attend. Before I took office, I was told when I went down there for the meetings and before I was appointed as on the Board of Trustees, that Lorraine County did not have any Commissioners attending the meetings since Ellen Zaleski was here. And that was the first and only Commissioner that attended. And this is a state association where there's so much information and networking and vendors that we can approach to see exactly what we're getting for our buck, that I'm really grateful that we have this attendance. I just want to thank you for that.
Well, and I want to piggyback on what a wonderful learning experience this is. Last year at the conference, that's where we learned about the availability of that $1 million from the Ohio Department of Development that has been created into our county port authority, so, you know.
There's so much.
There's information and sometimes there's money.
Right.
We also learned that some of our neighbors in Cuyahoga County watch our Commissioners meetings.
Oh, yeah, that was interesting. Tom Hayes, the new Director of the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, he gave a presentation on a lot of different things. And Jim and I were sitting up in the front row because there weren't any seats in the back. And he started out by saying what he does in his spare time, and he says he lives in Cuyahoga County, and they have two cable companies there, neither of which he can access because he lives in Bay Village. So he is served by our Media One. And so, for entertainment, he watches the Lorraine County Commissioner meetings. And he recognized Jim from the medias. I was pretty good. And then he came up in the hall afterwards to talk to Commissioner Vacy and myself, and he's a very personable man, so.
And he did the same thing at one of our Board of Trustees meetings. He kind of, it was like a closeness with the Director from Jobs and Family First with Lorraine County because he kept referring to Lorraine County, kept looking at me like we were old friends, and it came out that he had seen us on TV, and that's how he recognized us. So it really is good to go out there and meet the Directors and all these people face-to-face, get to know each other.
Commissioner Moore?
I agree. I was, first got down there, I thought it was just the three of us, and then I started telling everybody, we've got to get our Directors from all of our, well, they are here, David, I just haven't seen them yet, so. I think it was really, I think that's what's more important, is the people that are actually in there. A lot of these programs were designed for our Directors. So it was a good event to meet a lot of people and network and see what they're doing and what we're doing, so.
What it is, is the County Commissioners Association and the Engineers that put this on, but then they also have associations for the Administrator, the Purchasing, and all these different departments, and their associations also attend this conference. So it gives everybody a chance to network and know what other counties are doing and get different ideas. We learn about legislation, pending legislation. There's just, it's loaded. It's really good.
You get lots of gifts from the trade show.
Pencils. We've got lots of pens. So if anybody needs any pens or pencils or letter openers, just let us know. Candy.
If the Directors get a gift from me with a calculator with somebody's name, don't worry, I really did buy it, so.
Anyway, that's all I have.
Is there any old business? Are you none here? New business, other than Teresa, what's listed, please?
Commissioners will meet on Tuesday, December 18, 2001, 9:15 to approve the childcare provider payments for December 2001, and will recess in executive session to discuss pending litigation issues, should they continue from today. Thursday, December 20, 2001, will be the last Board of Commissioners meeting for the year 2001. Board of Commissioners' first meeting for the year 2002 will be the organizational meeting on Monday, January 14, 2002, at 9:30, and will meet again on Thursday, January 17, 2002, at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you. I move the reading of the Board Correspondence be waived.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Now. Do you want to go into executive session now?
I'll move.
Or in public?
No.
Commissioner Moore has moved that we recess into executive session to discuss personnel issues, and if time permits, the litigation issues as outlined by the prosecutor.
Second.
Oh, did you move?
No, I didn't. I was, David moved, in your second.
Okay.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
It's 12 after 10. We have to be back at 10:30.
Right.
The Commissioners reconvene for our 10/30 public hearing. This is a public hearing on the proposed annexation of approximately 3.7 acres in Aluria Township to the city of Aluria. Attorney Garrett Murray acting on behalf of the Agent Christina A. Torres. Petition and map were filed in the Board of Commissioners, received by the Clerk on October 1st. Letters were issued to the county auditor and engineer asking for review and accuracy of the petition and map. The engineer, by letter dated October 8th, stated the map is accurate and the description correctly follows the map, and the area is adjacent and contiguous with the city of Aluria. There is only one owner, which is Hardy Investment Associates Limited. The city of Aluria, by ordinance number 2001-199, adopted November 19, 2001, sets for services to be provided to this property if the annexation is granted. The Board of Commissioners, by Resolution 1-979, adopted October 25, 2001, received the petition and map and scheduled this public hearing. At this time, I would like to ask our Assistant County Prosecutor Gerald Innes to swear in and/or administer an oath of office to anyone who wishes to give testimony either for or against, ask a question. If you're going to speak, please stand and be sworn in.
I would ask anybody, even if they might want to say something, to go ahead and be sworn in. Do each of you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall be given, that you shall give, shall be the truth that you have answered God or under penalty of law, for instance?
Thank you. Attorney Garrett Murray?
Madam President, my name is Garrett Murray. My address is 120 East Avenue, Aluria, Ohio. I represent Attorney Christina A. Torres, excuse me, who is the agent and attorney for the petitioner-owner, who is Hardy Investment Associates Limited. It's a real estate holding company for 84 lumber, which was previously located on the subject site. We're here today requesting the annexation of 3.47-acre parcel from the township of Aluria to the city of Aluria. The permanent parcel number is 0623-0414, triple zero, 046. The address of the property is 41362 Grizzled Road, Aluria, Ohio. Prior to the meeting, I did submit as an exhibit a transcript of the proceedings filed in this annexation, along with a certification that it complies with the law. And I also left an order, what I call an order for annexation, which is a brief outline of the cases in the law involving annexations. I also left with you a map there, the annexation map, which I have here on the Board. This property is situated on the north side of Grizzled Road. It's about 665.05 feet west of the intersection of Leona Street and Grizzled Road. It's also south of Leona Street, and it's east and adjoins the Aluria Township Fire Station and Township offices. The subject parcel has 328.54 feet frontage along Grizzled Road, it's 491.68 feet along its westerly line, 327.90 feet along its north line, and 490.44 feet along its east line. The entrance of the parcel is on Grizzled Road. On this parcel, this is an improved parcel, on the parcel is a 7,600-square-foot storage building. There's a retail storage building of 19,200 square feet. There are storage sheds of 3,800 square feet, 2,500 square feet, and 2,000 square feet. This property adjoins the city of Aluria Corporation line on its north. That's along here. It's 327.90 feet along the corporate line of Aluria. And it also adjoins the corporate line on its west side, which is 166.68 feet. The proximity of this property to the Aluria Corporation line, in addition to the ones that join this parcel, is to be noted. On Grizzled Road, east of this site, the distance to the city line is about 167 feet, and that is the Handys' westerly property line. On the southeast of this property, across Grizzled Road, the corporate line is about 167 feet, and that's to the Lester, Robert Lester, westerly property line. On the southeast corner of Grizzled Road, the corporate line, I'm sorry, on the southwest, on the south side of Grizzled Road, the corporate line is about 50 feet, 50 feet from the subject parcel. In general, to the north and east of this property is Aluria City property. I point the proximity to Aluria's corporate line to show that the subject parcel does have some connectivity to the city of Aluria and fits in with the mix of commercial, neighborhood, retail business, and single-family homes that are interspersed along Grizzled Road. The purpose, primary purpose, to ask for this annexation, along with the other services of the city of Aluria, is to tie into the sanitary sewer line in Aluria. There is some history to that. Hardy Investment Associates Limited purchased this property in 1985. They developed 84 lumber facility on that parcel. And about, on or about December 12, 1996, Ken Klingshern, who was then the Aluria Township Building Official, issued an adjudication order to 84 lumber that the existing restrooms at that site must be connected to a sanitary sewer or to an EPA-approved sewage plant, or 84 lumber could seek approval from the State of Ohio Building Board of Appeals for permission to construct an interim holding tank on this property. 84 lumber appealed and did receive an order from the Board of Appeals of the Building Department of the State of Ohio, granting them a variance to construct a holding tank, provided that the site be tied into a public sanitary sewer when that became available. So 84 lumber constructed the holding tank, and sometime thereafter, the facility closed. And on April 2000, April 18, 2000, 84 lumber entered into a contract to sell the property. During the time that the buyer was doing its due diligence, it was discovered that there was some ambiguity as to whether the holding tank was properly permitted by the Board of Appeals. The Ohio EPA and Lorraine County Health Department contend that the decision of the Board of Appeals undermines EPA regulations and that the Ohio Board of Appeal has no authority to issue such an order. That matter was then referred to the Attorney General of Ohio, and they have not yet pursued that matter. So the EPA takes the position that the holding tank is illegal. And then in August of 2001, my client talked to Chuck Allen of the Ohio EPA, and he says that it would not be possible to construct a septic tank system at this commercial site, nor would the EPA approve a holding tank. Mr. Allen's position was that since there is a city sewer line in front of the property, that 84 should tap into that system. So on, after conversation with the EPA, the Lorraine County Health Department, city engineer of Aluria, the consensus was, the way to correct the problem was, of course, to tie into Aluria sewer. On September 5, 2001, 84 lumber appeared before the Utilities Committee of the city and requested permission to tie into the sanitary sewer without annexation. And the result was denied because of ordinance number 9345, which, you know, prohibits annexation to a community or a lot or a parcel that is not in the city. In September of 2001, the proposed purchaser of this property terminated the sale agreement. Now, the Aluria City sanitary sewer line is located on the south side of Grizzled Road, and as you'll remember from the Lester annexation, the sanitary sewer stops at the easterly line of the Lester property. I brought with me the-
Excuse me, Garrett. We don't have a Lester, I mean, it's not on ours, is it?
Pardon me?
I think you only have it out near the Lester property line, correct?
Yes.
The maps you gave us, it doesn't have. You just said it was across the street.
No, it doesn't. A little bit further on, I'm going to provide you with a map which will show all these property lines. So the sanitary sewer line is on the south side, and it stops at the Lester's east property line. That's roughly maybe close to 500 feet or less from my client's property line. Aluria Township, with Aluria consent, had extended an inch and a half, what they call a grinder line, with a forced main to its building on Grizzled Road. Now, the Aluria Township building is directly to the west of my client's property. The feeling is that 84 lumber would also be allowed, if annexed, to run an inch and a half grinder line to its property from the Aluria sanitary sewer to service this property. 84 lumber cannot tap into the Aluria Township line because of its size. It's a one-and-a-half-inch grinder line, so the size eliminates the contention that we could tie into it. So we would have to extend our own one-and-a-half-inch grinder line, just as Aluria Township did. The city of Aluria did pass ordinance 2001-199, which is part of your transcript, which indicates that they would provide services to this property if annexed, including police, fire, water, sanitary sewer, and garbage collection. And this subject property will not be deprived of any services that it now receives from Aluria Township. As you know, the law is, what is the good of the territory to be annexed? And in this particular case, the good of this territory is that without this sanitary sewer, my client will not be able to sell the property, will not be able to rent the property, or even occupy the property or use it, and the property would become dormant, rundown, and disrepair, and an economic loss to my client and an economic loss to the community as far as jobs and taxes are concerned. particular case, the good of this territory is that without this sanitary sewer, my client will not be able to sell the property, will not be able to rent the property, or even occupy the property or use it, and the property would become dormant, rundown, and disrepair, and an economic loss to my client, and an economic loss to the community as far as jobs and taxes are concerned. There is precedence for annexation on Grizzled Road. As I mentioned, in about December 2000, Lorain County Board of Commissioners approved the annexation to Aliria of a 3.22 acre parcel owned by Maynard Pandy, which is on the north side of Grizzled Road. It's about 167 feet east of my client's property. In about April of 2001, the Lorain County Board of Commissioners approved the annexation of a 1.48 acre parcel to the city, which is owned by Robert and Patricia Lester, and is located on the south side of Grizzled Road, and that also is about maybe 200 feet or less from the subject parcel. This area of Aliria Township is rather unique, because, as you'll see from the maps I'm going to submit to you, that prior to this request, it was bounded on the north, east, west, and south by, by the City of Aliria, also on its west by the township. This parcel that we're asking to be annexed will be bounded on the north and west in part by Aliria, and on the east and west by the township. So the parcel that will be annexed will not be an island, but it will be a peninsula. And as we know what the law is regarding islands, that can be applied to peninsulas, that an, the existence of an island alone will not defeat annexation as long as the decision to create it is not unreasonable, illogical, or arbitrary. We've indicated in the past that the legislature has given my client the right to petition for this annexation. In fact, some cases indicate that it's a policy of the state to encourage annexation by municipalities. The legislature, by enacting 709033, as you know, set out certain standards that a board of county commissioners must apply, and has restricted the board to definite factual determinations specifically called for in the annexation statute. The general good of the territory is what the test is. The general good of the territory to be annexed means the general good of the property, and also the owners, inhabitants of that property. We know that the ultimate focus of annexation proceedings is on the parcel to be annexed. We also know that, that the desires and intentions of the owner of the property is to be given greater weight in consideration of annexation than consideration of people who are not part of that annexation parcel. And we also found that according to the legislative policies, 709033 gives the owner of the parcel the freedom to choose the governmental subdivision that they wish their property to be a part of. Now, Aliria City and Aliria Township have entered into negotiations. Although I'm not directly involved in those negotiations, it's my understanding that the meetings are going well, that the respective councils for Aliria Township and the City of Aliria are working on drafts, but that it's not completed. And you recall that my client, Roland Enterprises, agreed to continue their annexation hearing to allow the parties to work together. In this case, however, my client is pressed for time, and would like to proceed with the sale of their property. I have, I have talked with Rick Huttman, who is here today, regarding the urgency of the sale, and the use of my client's property, which is now sitting vacant and can't be sold without sanitary sewers. And if the annexation is approved, and we go back before Aliria for rezoning, that also takes a matter of a couple months. So time is of the essence. And we have indicated to Aliria Township that we would be willing to contribute and compensate them for some of the lost property taxes and personal property taxes that, that'll happen, occur if this, if the annexation's approved. I have some exhibits that I'd like to present to you. First is a, an exhibit is the 2001 Highway Map of the county. And if I may approach the bench.
Now, you said you were in the process of talking to the townships, or that you've already talked about the lost-
Revenue down there.
I've spoken with Mr. Huttman. He's here to speak for himself this morning. We indicated to him that we would be willing to contribute, and he will indicate to him some more.
Oh, okay.
My purpose in presenting, my purpose in presenting this highway map to you is, you'll note that there is an arrow in the margin, which was placed there by me, and you'll indicate there's also, it points to an arrow in the center of the map. And the purpose of that is to show the, a general location of this property. And you'll see that in yellow there, it says Aliria Township Hall, and the arrow was supposed to be east of the township hall. So that, that little area, yellow piece there is the property that we're talking about, and it goes along Grizzled Road. And of course, the light yellow is Aliria Township, and the pink-purple, I have trouble with colors, pink-purple is the City of Aliria. I also have, I have a site plan. If I could again present this to you, the purpose of this is to show the buildings that are located on my client's property. So the purpose of the site plan is to show the various buildings that are located on I also have an ordinance, which you're familiar with, ordinance 9345, which is the ordinance setting forth a policy of the City of Aliria regarding furnishing utilities to residents and non-residents. I'd like to present that to you, along with a colored photo of the parcel.
That's what I mean. It's one of those things, if that was already cut out.
So if the matter is continued, can be, can be continued, and then perhaps moved back, moved up, if the parties can reach-
That's what I mean. It's almost like the Vermillion issue. It's almost like the Vermillion issue. I'm looking at this, right? Very similar where you get the two, I know, you know, if you get the two parties to agree.
Okay, here's the map of the site in northern north.
You're the clerk.
No, that's my captain's office.
Are these yellow lines supposed to represent the city?
Right, I'm going, I'll explain that to you. This, this colored photo is from the auditor's office, and just point out a couple salient features. Top of the map is I, is the, is 90, and of course, to the east is 57. If you look to the center of the map, that is our parcel, and the parcel number is O46. It's, and it is circled, I mean, not circled, but perimeter, it has a red line around it. So that's the subject parcel that we're talking about today. The yellow dotted line, that yellow dotted line is Township property. Everything that is not within that yellow line is Aliria City property. So Aliria City is-
Is it or outside of it?
You're saying the dotted line here, it's on the center of it. That's what's Aliria Township, right on the outside of the city, correct?
Right. So the, to the north of that dotted line is the City of Aliria. There, up there is Sam's Club, and over to the, to the left there, those long buildings, that's storage So O46 in the center, in the red lines, that's 84 Lumber. If you look to the left of that parcel, O.011, that's the Aliria Township building, that's their offices and fire station. And parcel 010, I think I remember that perhaps being an insurance office, but you see that that's bounded on the west by Aliria's corporate line, and the Township property, and 010 and 011 is bounded on the north by the Aliria corporate line. If you go down Grizzled Street to parcel 017 and 007, that's to the east of the dotted yellow line. Parcel 1.91 and 1.31 acres, that's the Pandy property. That, that, that's the property that the Commissioners approved in annexation in 2000. If you, if you look at parcel 003, which is below the Pandy property, that's to the east of the dotted yellow line on the south side of Grizzled Road, that is the Robert and Patricia Lester property. That's the property that, that in 2001, the county Commissioners approved of the annexation. Parcel O03 is important because at its easterly line is where the Aliria sanitary sewer stops.
Right on the road though, right?
Pardon me?
Right along the road?
It's in the road right away.
Right, that's right. It goes, does it go right up to the township line right there?
No, it goes, it goes up to Lester's-
Property line?
Lester, yes.
Okay. So they haven't done anything on their property yet?
I don't know what, I don't know that. But, but, but their annexation and rezoning Parcel 014, which is to the east of the 84 Lumber property, it shows 1.12 acres, you may see that. Its easterly line is the westerly line of the Pandy property. That's, that's the City of Aliria line. When the annexation is completed, O14 will have Aliria on its north, on its east, but it'll have Township property on its south.
Are these three, on O14, O15, right above that, is that part of a O15? Or is that landlocked? That looks like a separate deal.
I, I just think it's a separate parcel. I think that that's, that property-
Is it owned by the same people from-
It's on this map here. It's, it's owned by Robert J. Ansdale.
And that is-
All three, yeah.
Part of the township.
That's part of the township. But, but you see, but you see before the annexation, that piece, that little block there on the north side of Grizzled Road, it was bounded on the north by Aliria, on the east by Aliria, on the west by Aliria, on the south by Township and the City of Aliria.
Which piece, I don't understand that. Which piece are you talking about?
I'm talking-
You said before the annexation-
I say, before we came with this annexation, the property on the north side of Grizzled Road, 84 Lumber, Aliria Township trustees building, Ansdale's property, I'm just pointing out, that's on the north side of Grizzled Road. That was bounded on the north by Aliria, on the east by Pandy, Aliria, on the west by that little strip of parcel 039, and on the south, it was bounded by Township property, also Aliria property.
The contiguous of this property is from the back. It's from the far north, right?
Yes, correct.
No, Pandy's is to the east, and Pandy's is not contiguous to this piece of property.
No. My point is to show you where this property is in relation to the City, the City of Aliria. In other words, it's not out 10 miles from the City of Aliria. It's all part of the same area.
But the sewer, you know, we're talking about the sewer here. This is the one they're going to connect in. This is what they want. How they're going to get from this point here?
They would have to run that inch and a half grinder line, just as Aliria Township did, ran it from that line to its building.
Where does Aliria Township's access come from? Does it come from the east there, as you said?
The sewer?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that from the east as well?
Yes, it's my understanding.
Thank you, Rick.
It, it does.
Oh, is this property zoned now?
No, it's right here, it's the township.
I believe it's zoned, well, it'd have to be zoned commercial.
Okay, I thought you mentioned something about having to go to the city to get it rezoned.
Well, when any, any property comes into the City of Aliria after annexation, it has to be rezoned according to their regulations.
Right. Okay, what happens with the roadway and maintenance and safety service?
Well, at this, at this particular time, the City of Aliria plows snow up to the intersection of Leona Street and Grizzled Road. The Township plows the snow westerly on Grizzled Road. In talking to the Aliria City Street Department, if, and at this particular point, Mr. Huttman is here, and he can verify or explain this better than I, but I believe that maintenance of Grizzled Road to the west of Leona and Grizzled is done by the Township. I indicated to the Street Department that now that Pandy's property is in, if, if they had to be repaired to Grizzled Road, that they would, they would perform that if necessary.
Who would? The City of Aliria?
Correct. That's what the, yes, that's what the representative from the Street Department indicated.
So what we got is the townships are represented from Leona all the way up to the tracks.
They're cleaning.
They're cleaning. The townships are, correct?
Maintaining too?
Pardon me?
They're, they're plowing and maintaining those streets.
Correct.
And now they want to take, the city wants to take this property, don't-
Yes, because you see that-
And who's going to maintain the street?
That was the question I propounded, and the answer was that if now that Pandy is in, they would maintain, the city would maintain the street.
All the way up to?
Well, whatever was, would be in Aliria.
But do you have an agreement with the City of Aliria?
Because see, you got spots. What we got is like lots of peninsulas starting to pop up along here, but the township's still cleaning it, but they're not getting the revenue from-
Well, no, Aliria, no, up to this day, as you can see, that Grizzled Road is all in Aliria Township.
Oh, you got a little annexation here from Pandy's, a little peninsula that goes right to Grizzwell.
Right. That, that just, that occurred in-
Right here.
That occurred in December of 2000.
Okay.
Well, my, my point is, yes, that the configuration of this parcel, even before annexation, is sort of bizarre.
And what about safety issues, such as the fire department being the fire department is right there, and it's in the Township? Now who's going to offer that service?
Well, that service would be by the, by the Aliria City Fire Department. And Aliria City Fire Department certainly has adequate fire services, garbage collection, water.
And then we've got the sheriff in part of it for, for police protection and the City of Aliria.
Police Department, Aliria Police Department would provide those services.
I mean, there's little, little sections in here that seem to be Township, because according to this, you've got Township here, and you've got Township here. And then you've got this little piece in here, I think is Aliria.
Well, that's Aliria Township. That little, yeah.
This says City of Aliria.
Right here. This whole thing here is all Township.
Oh, this is the City of Aliria.
City of Aliria goes around it.
Okay, so we've got this, this Township.
They're going to have a- We're going to have a, we're going to create an island. What do we, if you do that, oh, no, and so I guess a reversal of another peninsula.
Where's the fire department, on this side or over here?
On the west, on the west side.
Right next to the area sought to be annexed.
Okay, that's their township hall too, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Oh, my goodness.
If I was a township trustee, I'd be negotiating a way to have the roads maintained, but that's just me if I was a trustee. But, I mean, is this, I mean, you're just getting all the facts out today, correct? I mean, it seems like to me there's still some issues between your group and the township trustees that have to be resolved yet.
The...
Maybe I'm wrong, I don't know.
The sole issue, and Mr. Hutman is here, and he can speak for himself, but my understanding is the sole issue is that we would be willing to contribute some to Aleria Township, as done in many other annexations, to compensate them for the loss of real estate, real property taxes, and perhaps personal property tax on this property.
Does that complete your comments, Mr. Murray?
Pardon me?
Does that complete your comments?
Well, about one page short. I just wanted to indicate to you that we feel that we've complied with the statutory requirements.
Well, that was going to be my question. Are you stipulating to compliance with all the requirements?
Yes, and my transcript has a certification to that.
Thank you.
That we have met the requirements of 709-02 and 03. We've met the requirements of the factual determinations of 709-033. It's the wishes of the owner that the parcel be annexed, and we have submitted that the general good of this territory to be annexed is clearly shown by the need of sanitary sewer services. The area is not unreasonably large, and my client's property cannot be sold, rented, or used without sanitary sewers. We respect the request that our request be granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. I see that Township Trustee Rick Hutman is here. Rick, do you have comments you would like to make to the board, especially since you were referred to by Attorney Murray?
Madam Chair, before Attorney Murray leaves the podium there, I have one more question. You referred to the property as being owned by 84 lumber, and then you mentioned Hardy Investment Associates. Who actually owns it?
No, ma'am, the...
Are they one and the same?
The petitioner, the owner, the petitioner and owner is Hardy Investment Associates Limited, and they're a holding company for 84 lumber.
Oh, okay.
So, they bought the property and developed 84 lumber business on that property.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Hutman?
Good morning, I'm Richard Hutman, 4200 Deborah Drive, Aleria Township, Ohio. I'm a Aleria Township trustee, and now the, while the trustees regret the policies that exist that are causing this annexation, we're not going to oppose this annexation. We're, we're with ongoing negotiations with the city, and those are progressing, so in respect to those, we hope that they continue to progress. But we're not going to oppose this annexation. We would like to see the property being utilized.
Well, then, if we grant the annexation, you don't have a deal on the table, what's stopping from walking? I mean, if you're not opposing, are you opposing it today, or are you opposing it after you have something in concrete?
We're looking at the overall picture of the entire township, not just this one parcel, so we're negotiating the whole picture, basically.
Okay, great, but let me ask you this then, are you not opposing this annexation today? Are you opposing it today?
If you approve it today, there's nothing, I mean, no, we're not going to, we're not going to oppose this annexation.
Today?
Today.
Okay.
If you want to approve it today, that's fine.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
Okay.
What about cleaning and maintaining the roadway here? Is the township saying that they'll continue to maintain that?
Sounds like they're working out an agreement.
Sounds like we're, that's part of, I mean, the city is...
But if we approve it, they don't have to work out anything. You're already cleaning.
They're working on a bigger picture.
We're working on, yeah, we're working on more than just this one thing there, and that'll include the maintenance and service of the roads that are in front of the different properties there.
And include Griswold Road.
Yes.
Are you speaking on behalf of yourself, or the...
I'm speaking on behalf of the trustees.
Okay.
So, but thankfully, they could not be here today, but we are in agreement on this.
Thank you, Rick. Any other questions the board has for Mr. Hutman? Is there any other city official present who would like to make a statement? Anyone who wants to speak in favor of this annexation? Yes, ma'am, would you come forward and state your name, please?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Christina Torres. I am counsel for Hardy Investment Associates. My address is in care of 84 Lumber Company, 1019 Route 519. That's in 84, spelled out in letters, Pennsylvania, 15330. And I think Mr. Murray has done a thorough job of presenting our case, but I just wanted to impress upon you that we have tried to exhaust other possibilities before filing the petition for annexation. In particular, I worked extensively with Chuck Allen at the Ohio EPA, which resulted in him actually visiting our site in August, August 23rd of 2001, to determine if we could put in a septic system at the site. And his conclusion was that we could not. Apparently, you know, most of the site is asphalted, and the soils are not proper for an installation of a septic system. So, when we got a denial from Mr. Allen, I then contacted city law director Pete Schilling, and tried to determine from him whether or not the city would be willing to provide sanitary sewer service to our site. And as Mr. Murray indicated earlier, that request was unanimously denied by the utilities committee. So, we really had no choice but to file for the annexation. Also want to make you aware that 84 Lumber Company ceased operations at the site in July of 2000. Property's been listed for sale since that time. We believe the fair market value of the property is roughly $825,000, and we've had it under agreement twice since July of 2000. The first agreement was an automotive sales user, and that buyer's due diligence, that fell through due to the sanitary sewer problem. And the second buyer was a company that was going to develop a bus hub for Lorraine County Transit Authority. And that particular buyer had some financing issues, which was one reason this did not go through, but the secondary reason was the sanitary sewer system, because there was just no resolution to the problem. So, I guess I'd like to say that, you know, my client does have a valuable asset in Aleria Township that really has been rendered invaluable because of this problem. So, when you're considering our petition, I'd like you to bear this in mind, and also bear in mind that under the laws of Ohio, it is the owner's choice to be annexed into the city of Aleria, and also, I believe it is in the best interest of the property. So, thank you for your time this morning.
Is there anyone else present who wishes to make a statement in opposition or in favor of this annexation? Sheriff Stemedy?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to ask you if, what you thought about this.
Yeah, I'm in favor of progress, and everybody knows I'm the county sheriff, and I protect the citizens and the townships, and I think we have enough adequate force to do that. And Aleria Police Department has an excellent department, but so does Lorraine County Sheriff's Office. I guess my opinion of this thing is, it's disamended property today, and we know Aleria has things on the board right now, issues that's 30 acres tomorrow and 60 the next day. Where is this going to end? And I think one of the problems that I see is Aleria can bend a little bit too, because they could say, we're going to approve this to tap into the sanitary sewer system and charge a fee for it. But I understand they want to get tax base and things of that order too, but I think people move out of cities into townships because that's what they want to do. And I think the services that the townships and the county provide are adequate also.
My concern, Sheriff, is, you know, we're supposed to look at this at the best interest of the property to be annexed. In your opinion, is it going to be to the interest of that property for their safety to have city on almost both sides? And the service from the city police department, is it going to be confusing? Who do we call, the sheriff or the city police? I mean, this seems like to me it would confuse the owners or future owners of that property, and it might create a safety issue. And again, being the fire department is so close to that property, they're going to call the city's fire department, which is on the other side of 57. Will these people know who to call? Do they call the city, or do they call the one next door?
I think if they are annexed, then they know who to call if an emergency would come up, because there is, you know, there's entities over there now, whether it's city and, like, we have Pandy's, we had 84 lumber, and like I say, I'm not here, Aleria Police Department's the next department, but so is ours. I guess my issue is that, is this ever going to stop? And I understand Aleria's looking at their own tax base and their own interests, and I guess I'm looking out for the county and the township's interest.
I agree with you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Anyone else who wants to make a comment, either for or against this particular issue?